All right, Madam Vice Mayor, I think she should be here momentarily. So if we want to go ahead and get started, we're more than welcome to do that.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everybody, to the December 1st, 2021 meeting of the Reno City Council. At this time, we will officially open the meeting and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we could have, we are honored here today to have members of the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation with us, if they would like to stand up and lead us in the pledge.
(Pleading) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here today.
Duer.
Here.
Delgado. Weber.
Here.
Jarden.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy. Absent at this time. Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will go into general public comment. Madam Clerk, if you'll please give the instruction and begin the public comment.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We're moving on to item A3. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and councils as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Please note that council may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action today. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers. Our first public commenter today is John Lacko Niani, followed by Stanley White, followed by Mark Markell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today regarding the nuisances and hazards of low-flying aircraft over our community of Donner Springs. This has been going on since May 20, um, May of 2020. It's, it's just totally out of control what's going on. We've been, they're, they're flying over our homes at anywhere from 200 to 400 feet. I have pictures. They're flying over to school, and the kids are in school at 600 feet. This is hazardous. It's hazardous, and it's out of control. Under Section 30 that the city, under Section 30 that the city agreed upon with, with the Airport Authority, it does state that you have the power, uh, it's right here. Sorry. States you do have, under the city sign in 1977 with the airport, "Power of county and cities to regulate hazards by zoning not affected." If anybody doesn't think this is a hazard, this is wrong, what's going on. We've been, 90% of the time, these planes are turning left. We're, we're just getting barraged day after day, and it's got to stop. I mean, I've talked to numerous people in the community. There's a lady that I met Monday night. She's been in her home 28 years. She's written in letters. She's tried to get through to everybody. Nobody wants to sit down and talk this out and work it out. Why not? Is it all, is this all about power and revenue? That's what it seems to be. But why can't we sit down and work it out as a community? Figure it out? And she's, she's at a point where she's, you know, she's ready to pick up signs and go protest out in front of the airport. If that's what it has to come down to, I mean, what do we have to, what do we have to do to be heard? It, it's getting to be 200 feet, November 21st, at 10:34 in the morning. We've been woken up at 5:50 a.m. on a Sunday during their touch and goes. There, there's more than enough airspace in this town that it doesn't have to be going over the same neighborhood day in and day out. And this lasts for two to seven hours at a time. And I can't even hold a conversation in my backyard and enjoy my grandkids without every four to five minutes without a plane coming over, and I have to stop holding a conversation. That's an invasion of privacy. It, it's just wrong. So I hope, you know, there, there's legislation that you can pass to protect our homes. And I have a couple of them. There was actually one that was passed back in Suffolk County. It states that "The legislation finds and determines that federal administration has failed to regulate the operation of small flying aircraft." This has been done in other municipalities and cities throughout the country because the FAA can't, they can't police themselves. And these people are taking advantage of us and what they're, what they're doing by flying over. It's, it's, it's a hazard.
Thank you, sir. Can you make sure to give your materials to the clerk?
Would you mind meeting with my liaison? If you could wave, Amy? We could set something up.
I appreciate that, Oscar.
I know the noise committees believes have met with you, the Airport Authority, but we can meet on the side to see, figure out if there's anything else.
I appreciate that. It's got, it really needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Madam Vice Mayor, for the record, I just want to note that I, Madam Mayor was on the phone. We just hadn't moved her over as a panelist, so I apologize, but she was present during roll call.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Um, our next public commenter is Stan, Stanley White, followed by Mark Markell, followed by Shirley Folkins-Roberts.
Hello, my name's Stanley White. I'm here to speak.
Sir, please put your mask on.
Oh, all right. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Stanley White. I'm here to speak to the same issue that the previous gentleman did. My comment refers to the noisy, low, and frequent flights by small aircraft directly over my home in the Donner Springs neighborhood of southeast Reno. Here's a description of what has gone on recently, some of this stuff, and it's gone on over a year. Sometimes, as he mentioned, it starts at 5:30 in the morning. Air traffic over Donner Springs has been heavy of late, including this morning. Both Saturday and Sunday, November 13th and 14th, were particularly bad, according to WebTrack and FlightAware websites. Most flights originate, and there's an example, originate from Great Basin Aviation and Advanced Aviation, two flight schools operating out of RNO. On Monday, November 15th, flights by a plane from Great Basin Aviation, which is this, passed overhead about, about 10 times every few minutes in the morning. It was continuous, repeated, and I assume he was doing touch and goes, but I really don't care. The altitudes that these websites reported were approximately 500 feet over my house. I've filed a noise complaint with the FAA, haven't received a response. The city has a noise ordinance that they don't seem to want to enforce, and you all can look it up. It's Reno Administrative Code, Chapter 8, Point 22. I've contacted Reno Code Enforcement and was told that since the noise originates at the airport, they can't do anything. I disagree. It may originate at the airport, but it doesn't stay there. Once the problem leaves the airport and flies over Reno, it becomes a problem for all affected Reno residents. The City of Reno issues licenses to these businesses and therefore should require them to adhere to the Reno Administrative Code. How can they be exempt just because their business happens to include flying? Would a land-based business be permitted to repeatedly drive excessively noisy vehicles to a residential neighborhood? I've contacted everyone on the Reno City Council, various responses, but nothing substantial, including Mr. Delgado, who's my Ward 3 representative. He's, he hasn't bothered to try to attempt to contact me. The Reno City Council and Airport Authority need to get this situation under control. Require the FAA to modify their flight pass for these schools to cease all the noisy and harassing passes over Donner Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Madam Clerk?
Mark Markell, followed by Shirley Folkins-Roberts, followed by Faith Ross.
Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor. I'm on the phone and see council members and see manager. My name is Mark Markell, and I'm concerned to Reno residents. I'm here today, as I am a meeting, to warn people and show people what can happen when you drive with a drunk driver. Back in 89, I, I was a passenger, and we rolled eight times, and I was ejected, and it landed on my head, putting me in a coma for a month, in hospital for nine and a half, uh, no, I'm sorry, six and a half months. And I'm here today because God will not lie to show you people what can happen to drunk drivers, and, yeah, them too, but drunk drivers can take that and fast yours in a drunk driving crash. And this holiday season, we, we must keep the innocent victims in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Great message. Madam Clerk?
Shirley Folkins-Roberts, followed by Faith Ross, followed by Kevin Christensen.
Morning, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council. I am Shirley Folkins-Roberts with the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, and I'm here today to thank council for all the years of support for the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation. Today specifically, Councilman Reese is designating a donation to us. Councilwoman Weber did a few weeks ago, and we are just here today to say thank you. Secondly, I have an important announcement, and I am going to be leaving as executive director, and I'm here today to introduce Faith Ross, who is our new executive director, and I will go back to the board of directors. So she's going to chat with you and thank you in a moment. Thank you all so much.
You've done a fabulous job. We're going to miss you for sure. Madam Clerk?
Good morning.
Oh, sorry. Faith Ross, followed by Kevin Christensen, followed by George Campioni.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me here today, and I am happy to say that Shirley is going to the board, so she's not going anywhere. We'll still get to keep her. So my name is Faith Ross, and I am the new executive director at Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, and I wanted to thank Councilman Reese for his recent donation to us. This, we are the only nonprofit in northern Nevada serving children and families with a childhood cancer diagnosis. So we help with emotional and financial assistance, helping with travel, medical, and household bills. We want families to be able to focus entirely on their child and their diagnosis and not have to worry about all of those other things. So it's been a wonderful opportunity to receive this funding. Your support, Councilman Reese, is going to help us provide help, hope, and courage to these families who are going through such a brutal journey right now. So, and it's wonderful timing for this donation because we are in the midst of a six-month fundraising campaign with the William N. Pennington Foundation. Your support will be doubled, and so all donations until February are matched, up to $500,000. So thank you again. We really appreciate all of your support and look forward to sharing the results of your gift.
I would just, before you leave, just a quick comment. I do not have council member donation funds available at this time, but I would have loved to support your cause. But I want to just make a, a personal comment. I personally have a family member, 10-month-old baby, who was just diagnosed with leukemia, who's starting that two-year chemo treatment, and have learned more than I think I want to know about, you know, the, the issues that you're dealing with and the people that you're helping. It is, it's a devastating diagnosis, no matter which version. I've learned a lot about all the types and the versions, and, um, so thank you. Just, I just wanted to say a personal thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and if your family is local, we would love to help them.
Um, our family's not local, but, um, I could use some help, probably.
Yes, please, look us up. We would love to visit with you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Delgado?
And Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, I know that, I know Ms. Ross and Ms. Folkin-Robins will not be in the audience next week, but Mayor Shevy and Vice Mayor Jarden and I also made separate council fund donations that will occur on our next agenda, and that was in support, a total of $6,000 that will support the Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, and it will also help with the Crush Cancer Wrestling Tournament that is going to happen here in, after the first of the year. That's Cooper Sandoval, who is leading that fight. And that money, as Ms. Ross said, is going to be doubled. So all told, we're talking about, you know, about $15,000 worth of impact between the mayor and the vice mayor and my contributions, and I think Ms. Weber as well. So it's exciting, and you can tell that it's something that we're all passionate about. I know many of us have been affected personally by cancer, and, uh, you know, it's a great work that the foundation is doing. Thanks so much for letting us be a small part.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Delgado?
Thank you. And it's a pleasure to see both of you guys. I've been working with you guys for years, so it's great to see that you're sticking around and continuing to be part of our community. And I'll, I'll match Mr. Reese's give for, for a thousand for my discretionary fund, so I look forward to that in the next few council meetings. So thank you for all the hard work that you guys do.
Yes, thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Kevin Christensen, followed by George Campioni, followed by Elise Campbell.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor Shevy and Vice Mayor Jarden, and members of the City Council, and Mr. Thornley. My name is Kevin Christensen, and I have lived here most of my life in the Truckee Meadows in Reno or Sparks, with the exception of being gone for about six years. I'm here to address the City Council regarding a sentence that I read in the Reno newspapers. And that sentence said, "He tore down motels where poor residents lived during a housing crisis. The city leaders did nothing to stop him." Well, ladies and gentlemen, facts are facts. Mr. Jacobs claims that he has spent $400,000 in relocating and helping 280 people. I'd like to see his books. To date, he has bought 100 parcels of land in downtown Reno, 19 motels. 14 of the, the buildings have been demolished. And the City of Reno has given Mr. Jacobs tax credits. He has given him deferred building permit fees, and the City of Reno claims to be partnering with other agencies and has proven approaches to the problems of homelessness. I call to your attention the fact that the last time the Community Homeless Advisory Board met was July 12th, 2021. It has not met since then. I personally have stared homelessness in the face all of my adult life. In my ministry at Good Shepherd Lutheran Church on California Avenue, we had an outreach program where we used to help mostly transient people get a tank of gas or a motel room overnight, or perhaps we'd pay for a month's rent for somebody, or hand out some food. I stared at homelessness when I worked as a chaplain and social worker at the Nevada Mental Health Institute. And I went out and I met with homeless people who were living out in ditches and woods and places because they didn't want to be, again, re-institutionalized. Since 2016, and Mr. Jacobs, my time has expired.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be back the next time.
Thank you very much. And to, just for clarity's sake, the C-HAB met on November the 1st and meets again on next Monday. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next.
Get his information.
Okay.
And give him some facts.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
George Campioni, followed by Elise Campbell, followed by Terry Brooks.
Hello. My name is George Campioni, and I'm here to talk about the waste that I see in the city, okay? Particularly on a street, Third Street, between Washington and Vine. There's been at least one death there, but to make a long story short, what you've got now is you've got the campers back in there. You, you put up signs, you put up rocks, okay? So they can't camp out there. You've got signs, "Can't park between 2:00 and 6:00," right? Who's policing between 2:00 and 6:00? Nobody. And you want proof? I got proof. I got pictures, okay, showing not one, not two, not three, four vehicles, okay? Sitting there at 4:00 in the morning, by God, all right? Because there's no police officers that are going to enforce this, and there's absolutely no, what do they call it? The, uh, parking enforcement people? Ha, you think they put work at between 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning? What's a sign good for? Nothing. A waste of our money, all right? Additionally, let's bring up parking enforcement, all right? We have a vehicle parked right behind the Lear Theater. Been parked there now for at least four months. Got a flat tire, sitting in the red, and again, this is right on Riverside and First Street, right there, okay? How many cops drive past this on a daily basis, all right? Is there one person, one police officer, that will get out of his car and write a ticket? Absolutely not, all right? And another thing with the police, what the parking enforcement do, they put these orange stickers on the cars, all right? And I can show you a bounder RV that sits on Third Street between Ralston and Washington, another trailer, that they slap orange stickers on it, they peel them off, and, and I got a, they don't, there's supposed to be 24-hour, 48-hour notice, they give them 10 days. You don't want, you, you want proof of that? I got proof of that. I got a ticket on that, on, that I made, all right? And they tried to close it on me. It took them three months to take care of an RV, all right? No, all right? They're not doing job. Who, what are we paying for? All right? I don't know. And so they're not writing tickets. We have no parking enforcement. And registration. Let's talk about the registration. I got a police officer on video, on my cam, all right, telling me there's nothing they can do because of Lance District Circuit Appeals. Well, you know something? That's BS. And when I tried to tell him, well, you know, they're driving around, because he says they can't give him a ticket because they're not in the vehicle when, when they see him just parked, all right? They're driving around all over the place, all right? People, if, I get hit by one of these, which was a person killed just on Fourth Street here just recently, just yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Elise Campbell, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Amanda Vaskov.
Hello there. My name is Elise Campbell. For the record, I am an undergraduate student at the University of Nevada Reno. I'm studying social work right now, and I'm here today to voice my concerns as a future social worker towards the City of Reno's housing crisis. I will be entering the field after I graduate in May 20 of '22. I'm only months away, and I'm terrified more than ever. This anxiety is not a product of normal graduation jitters, however. The truth is, I'm fearful for our unhoused population and my ability to serve these folks. I am confident in my skills. I'm confident in my abilities and my knowledge. However, I'm not confident in our city's ability to utilize tax dollars and emergency funding correctly to help these folks. The housing crisis has been ongoing for years and continues to get worse as we speak. This vulnerable population, needs are going nowhere, and no matter how many millions of dollars are poured into mega shelters or transitional housing programs, it's money wasted as long as there are no affordable housing for these folks to move into. We're seeing this at both our place and the Cares Campus. Folks who are ready to graduate and their housing plans have no, uh, they have nowhere to move. We must utilize existing housing and land within your city limits to provide greater housing opportunities to these folks. This means selling property and housing below market rate to compensate, and I understand doing this doesn't directly benefit the city or landlords or real estates. However, it needs to be done, and if it is not done, um, oh, and if not that, there needs to be city-implemented standards that provide protections, rights, and assistance to these folks. They have no one in their corner right now. It is your responsibility as our elected officials to provide these protections to our constituents, whether they're homeless or not. They're human beings. They deserve a chance, and they will not be given this chance unless our elected officials make affordable housing accessible to low-income folks in our community. I am only an intern right now. I, I don't even have my BSW yet. However, it's so clear to me why burnout is so prevalent in our field. And social workers, um, our work is so important because if we aren't doing it, no one else will in our community, and I just spent like thousands of dollars in higher education just to have my eyes open to how our city is fundamentally failing its underprivileged and oppressed constituents, just to realize that I cannot effectively do my job until this is done and until you folks do yours. I am urging you to instate standards and protections for low-income renters and to provide real affordable housing options in our city. Money spent on shelters and transitional housing programs are wasted otherwise, and social workers cannot do our jobs until you do yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
Terry Brooks, followed by Amanda Vaskov.
Good morning. My name is Terry Brooks. I'm here again, and today I'd like to address trying to adapt to going to school while being homeless. Just imagine being a young child and also being homeless. You still get to go to school, but you do so in distress. When you are in school with others, you feel different from everyone. Because of the homeless kids there, you are the only one. And being hungry makes it hard to concentrate when for breakfast that morning, a candy bar is all you ate. It is not at all easy for your attention to turn and focus directly on what you are there to learn. When you are living under all this tension, it is not that easy for you to pay attention. And because every day at school, it's the same clothes that you wear, that is even more embarrassment for you to bear. Under all these circumstances, you find yourself in a case where you don't want to be, and you feel out of place. And there are some kids who like to harass any kid like you who is in their class. That makes you uncomfortable whenever you're in school. That makes you uncomfortable whenever you're in school because you know you will be the subject of ridicule, and that makes it difficult for you to relate to any other child who happens to be your classmates. It is very difficult to adapt to such a situation, which makes it even more difficult to receive an education. If instead you had a lot of friends to your satisfaction, you would certainly benefit from friendly interaction. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back when I have even more to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk.
Amanda Vaskov.
Good morning, Councilmen and women. My name is Amanda Vaskov. I currently serve as the co-director of elections for UNRASUN. That's our student government. Today, I'm here to show my support for Agenda Item B7 concerning funds for donation to ASUN for our event. Two weeks ago, ASUN held a civic engagement event called Elect All the People, aimed at involving students from all backgrounds in the policy process. We gathered leaders from Nevada community organizations, professors on campus, Nevada State Assembly people, and Reno's own Councilman Reese to encourage students to take policy action. Based on data we collected from participant exit surveys, this program was very well received. Given that it was the pilot year for our revamped, expanded version of Elect All the People, ASUN is very pleased to see that our expansion of this program has been deemed valuable by the student body. We hope to build upon the progress we've made in this program for next year's Elect All the People. Without council support for Elect All the People, we would not have been able to increase participation in this program from four students to 45. Without Resolution B7, we would not have been able to develop this program to better serve the student body and raise the next generation of future leaders. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration of Agenda Item B7.
Thank you so much, and congratulations on your inaugural event.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Delgado.
Yeah, and like Councilman Reese, I'll also give to you guys a discretionary fund. Sorry, I can't talk right now. So Amy, if you could wave your hand, meet with her, make sure that I match his donation as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all the work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We got two. If you hang around a little bit, you might get another.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any further public comment?
Madam Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment, however, we do have voicemails, and then I will tell you the correspondence we've received as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes, this is in regard to condemned property. If we, the people need to keep calling because people are living in a condemned property, and the owner doesn't do anything about it, the owner should be fined every time the police have to come out. The property is 1565 Carlin Street, and the police have been there almost every day because people are living in a condemned apartment complex. Thank you.
Yes, my name is John Gabriel. I'm calling to make a complaint about these panhandlers that are on corners of Washington County where I live. It's ridiculous how these people are so close to the edge, sitting in a wheelchair. Wheelchair is ready to fall off the edge as I make the turn. I'm driving a big, big, I have to be extra careful that my rear wheels will not get too close to this person because he's ready to fall off the curb, and I would crush and kill him. And then my taxes and yours would be used to settle lawsuits. These people should not be panhandling in the middle of roadways. It's dangerous, and it's very stupid. As you well know, if these people get killed, all of a sudden their long-lost relatives will come out and just say, I just loved Uncle Albert, I want to sue everybody involved. But when Uncle Albert was living, they could care less about it. You have to do something to stop these panhandlers. That's my comment, and it makes perfect sense. These panhandlers are very dangerous to themselves and to the public. Thank you, goodbye.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, for the record, we did receive two comments, which were general in nature and not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, November 20, or November 30. These comments were written correspondence received via Reno.gov online portal comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on the public portal. In addition, we did have a Paul David Kaufman register in person but did not wish to speak, and his comments will be entered into the record as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you for everybody for their public comments. At this time, we will move into Item A4, which is the approval of the agenda. City Manager Thornley, do we have any changes?
No changes today.
We have no changes. Councilmembers, may I get a motion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll move into Item A5, the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any modifications? Hearing none, may I get a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. This time, we're moving into Item B, the consent items. Do any council members wish to pull any items for discussion? We'll start with Councilmember Brekis.
I'd like to pull B1, A2.
B1, A2. Member Delgado.
Nothing.
Member Doer? B4, please. Member Weber, nothing. Mayor Shivi, any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, member.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
No, thank you.
I'm sorry. I also wanted to pull B3.
B3, and Member Reese.
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, may I get a motion for the remaining items?
Second.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 A motion, anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll pull Item B1, A2. Councilmember Brekis.
Yeah, this is for a bar in the Midtown area on Virginia Street. Ninety percent of the time when we license a bar, it's in a tenant space that's had a bar. This is a very old building that's never had a bar there, and my questions are the hours of operation. Is there anything we can do to put the hours a little bit less than 24-hour? I don't think there's a lot of bars operating at 24-hours, and I have often heard concerns from public safety perspectives and neighbors about 24-hour bar operations. And also, are they coming in for a cabaret?
Lance Ferrato, Business Relations Program Manager, for the record. To my knowledge, they are not coming in for a cabaret license at this time. The hours of operation as stated by the applicant are 24-hours a day, like you said. The zoning allows for that, planning has looked at that. I don't know that the council has the ability to restrict the hours just based on the fact that it's a bar. There are quite a few bars in town that are 24-hours.
Yeah, okay. Haven't we given intent to look at some of these hours of operations in our zoning code work, Title 18 work?
Could you repeat that?
Well, haven't we given direction to staff to look into these hours of operations in the zoning code?
To my knowledge, I can't speak on that. I'm not positive.
Okay, so we have no ability to not license a bar for 24-hour operation in the Midtown area?
Not to my knowledge, and I can check with Planning Department and see if that's something that I'm just not familiar with.
I thought under the, some of the new ordinances, we could take another look at the privileged licenses and apply conditions at this level.
I'm more than happy to go look into that. If you want to hold this item, I can come back for you.
Councilmember Brekis, I think if I, and maybe somebody can clear my memory on this, my understanding, because I think it was my motion, was that in the, at the annual review of the license, we would then look at a number of factors, including calls for service, and would then, based upon a variety of factors, could apply additional conditions up to including additional security, maybe modification of hours at that annual review. I don't recall that we did it at the outset. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we did that.
You're correct. Those, that would apply to packaged alcohol sales, so this is an on-premise license. Yeah, so there's a differentiation there.
Okay.
So, I guess, you know, and I don't ask to consult with attorneys often, but, so they have a property right entitlement under our standards to operate 24-hours. Is that your understanding legal?
We'll have to double-check on that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I thought under the zoning code work, and it may be something that didn't get prioritized like many things, and maybe it's something that's, you know, fallen by the wayside because we've had a lot of turnover in that department, but I thought we were going to look at these 24-hour operations because years ago, anything operating after 11:00 PM required a special use permit, with the exception of some industrial work, which was, you know, stocking, and now we've moved to this very liberal hours of operation that we used to have in downtown. Excuse me, because it was industrial and it was the casino core, we're 24-hour. Now we're seeing bars come into areas that are becoming very mixed in terms of housing, and I'm concerned. Has it passed background, have these passed background yet?
This one's still pending background.
Okay, my comfort level would be to get the questions answered, and I did bring these up to the manager on Monday with my, you know, agenda review, and if we have time to advertise and put it in next week's agenda, if that hasn't posted, I know we're in a very difficult situation right now because then we close up, and I don't want to close anyone, you know, I don't want to shut anyone down who wants to maybe open for the holiday season, but I, if we could get it on the next agenda, I would like to have these questions answered because I'm concerned about a 24-hour operation at that location, and Ward 1 is right across the street. I think there's more residential over there, but there's not that much residential on the other side. I'd also like to hear what police says on this.
Is there, is the applicant here by chance?
I'm sorry?
The applicant is not here?
They're not.
I just wondered if, City Manager, if the, and I'm not opposed to Member Brekis's position on this one, if the questions we believe could be answered as we sit here today and maybe not hold up, or if it's better to move it.
Well, I mean, I think it, my advice at this point would be to have legal do some of the legwork, right? I mean, this is sort of, it exists at the confluence of the zoning code and a privileged license, and so the question, as I understand it, is whether or not the. I think we can still, we can still post. We can add this to the agenda for the eighth if we need to.
Yeah.
Madam Vice Mayor. One second, Member Reese, Member Delgado, and then to you.
And I appreciate the concerns in the comments related to 24-hour. I think that's something we've all kind of, as we start to see the change of dynamics within our communities, there's concerns. I have not heard concerns related to 24-hour issues, but I'm open to, hopefully, if we could continue it till later this meeting or the next one. I know it's a conversation I've heard, but it's also important to me to hear who else has 24-hour within the, you know, neighboring jurisdictions on Virginia Street. I don't want to all of a sudden start taking away opportunities for people that are living in conditions based on, without having a more general, larger conversation with respect to the corridor. So that's part of, that's something that'd be important to me, too, if you could have that information as to what those neighbors, if they have the right to 24-hour as well. So I think it's a bigger conversation, so, thank you.
If I may, I think, I think the corridor, and this was a very changed condition, allowed 24-hours. And I look at these every time because a lot of times, people do not stay to go 24-hours. They say 11 or 12, and that's how it comes through. And I know it's hard for police to have one bar restricted to one hour and one bar restricted to the other, but 24-hours in an environment like this is pretty, is pretty extensive activity, and I think that we've done better when we look at them on a case-by-case through the Planning Commission. I thought we gave direction to do that on Title 18, or in the casino core, where there's also other activities there. So if we can run it through today, that'd be great. If not, and we can kick it off to next meeting, I think that would be very good if we can still post, but, and I certainly have no intention of pushing these people off till January because I know when people are ready to go, they're ready to go. So I'll move to, just, can we just move on and then before we close?
Yes, and Madam Clerk, will you please remind me to make sure we don't close the meeting out and not bring this item back?
Very good.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Reese.
Thank you so much, and I'll be brief. I guess my only concern, not about the larger issue, but the micro issue, is that if a member, any one of us, has a concern about the business licensing that's on a particular agenda, I think it's incumbent upon us to reach out to the applicant. I don't think it's fair for folks who are trying to open businesses in the city to be surprised by a thing that happens. So I think more often than not, folks in this section of the business licensing provisions of our agenda do not come to the meetings. They probably don't understand entirely why they're on an agenda, and so to have one pulled, especially for a business who is trying to open a new business, it goes against what we're trying to do, which is be open for business. So I'm reluctant to push it off, although obviously a week is a small amount of time. Councilmember Brekis has already indicated her desire to see it not be pushed past the holidays. I don't know this business or this business owner, but I certainly wouldn't want to act in a way that harms them without having invited them to counsel and also express my concern about what their item was. So that's my only reluctance to support pushing it out.
Thank you very much. So we'll try to bring this back later, and if possible, even the applicant, if they're available to maybe come and answer questions as well, that might be helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're moving on. This time, we'll move on to Item B3, Councilmember Brekis, and then we'll move to Member, Councilmember Doer, B4. Yes, Mayor Shivi.
Yes, quick question. I thought that we also notified any residents within a certain proximity of a 24-hour use. Is that correct?
Staff, we have a question regarding notification of surrounding members of a 24-hour use. Madam, Mayor Shivi, we, some of our staff is huddling in the corner discussing the item at this moment, so we're going to get them back to the podium and answer your question.
Mr. Ferrato? Mayor Shivi had an additional question while you guys were making discussion over there. If you could review the question.
The other thing I'd ask, if Mr. Ferrato could reach out to that business, I think that Councilman Reese makes a really good point. A lot of times, especially around the holidays, they sort of already have a schedule laid out if they were thinking that they were getting this license approved. Is it possible for Mr. Ferrato to reach out to them and then maybe bring it back?
Lance Ferrato, for the record, yes, Madam Mayor, I will reach out to the applicant, and I had no issues contacting the applicant throughout this process, so I would assume I'd be able to get ahold of them right away, and if I can get them back to come in and answer questions, then I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Ferrato, the mayor had another question, too. Yes, Mr. Ferrato, she had the question of when there's an application for a 24-hour use, do surrounding residents get notified?
Not by the Business License Division, not that I'm aware of. If there's anything that goes out of the Planning Division, that's a possibility, but I don't think so. I don't believe there's any, anything in our processes to, that would do that at this time.
Thank you. We'll bring these back later and hopefully get this cleared up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, any other members have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to Item B3, Member Brekis, then to Member Doer with Item B4.
Yes. You know, just like the prior one, I brought up questions. Um, uh, you know, just like the prior one, I brought up questions to the manager, and, and I thought they would relay, be relayed down to staff. I brought up questions about this one, and I don't know if a memo came forward, but is this on the CIP as a distinct project? The Booth Street Sewer Siphon Project? I've been focusing what our sewer needs are for some time, and I've never, I've never heard of this one in particular.
So the, the design of the Booth Street Siphon is, is programmed in the City of Reno 22 fiscal year budget under the Sewer Collection Systems category.
Okay.
So we do have it under that category, which is kind of a broad category with a number of items in there.
Okay. Here's, here's a suggestion for transparency in budgeting. You know, we had a lot of comments here today about you're wasting money and so on, and it starts with your budgeting process that is transparent. And so I see us going here, and I brought this up for years now, and I think particularly, I think we have some bond offerings coming forward. We just had some rerating on the sewer fund. So I think it's incumbent that we really be as transparent as we can with what we're going on with the sewer project. And RTC actually does a reasonably good job on, you know, on at least showing, you know, where they are in project stages. So, so let's say we have a $350,000 design contract. What's the next step after that?
The, the project will obviously move into construction and, which will likely occur in the next fiscal year, depending on the timing that goes on with this.
Is there an estimate on what this is cost-wise?
So we have ballpark estimates, but until the design's finished, we, we don't know the exact cost on that, but...
Okay. What do we think it might be?
The, the siphon itself, we're, we're thinking between five and $6 million.
Okay. So we got a $6 million project that's going to construction. That's kind of a big deal, and I know we have some technical analysis that was done years ago, so we've known it needs to come. The CIP is not necessarily a, you know, just this year's budget and all the wish lists. I think when you get to projects this significant, you should probably call it out as its own item. I've been asking for this for years. It's a best practice in capital improvement planning of a seven, $6 million project to do the siphon. Because here's another thing, is we know it's going to be multi-year, and I'll, I'll let it, you know, go around, and I want to ask a few other questions about this project.
Thank you very much. Do any other members have any questions on this item? Okay, back to Councilmember Brekis.
Okay, thank you. So here's how I would have taken this, as, you know, the siphon project's plan, and you had some nice maps in there, and year 22 design, so that's D. I think year 23 you're going to be in N, which is NEPA, or permitting, right?
So there will be permitting required for this project, but we, we're confident we can get it through the process.
You think you could, okay, so you think 22D, 23P, 24C. And just, obviously, everyone knows your outer years, it becomes a little less clear, but it lets everyone know that we're investing $6 million in the sewer deterioration in the older neighborhoods. We've got some Big River stuff coming up, and, and ask questions about it, you know. I just, I really have a problem with a multi-year, $7 million project thrown into the collection system. To me, the collection system is breaks, it's, you know, maintenance. It's not a project that goes through federal permitting and coming up around $6, $7 million. So I just want to use this because I am very passionate about transparency and budgeting. I think we've made some improvements. I'd really like to see us get better on that, but I just don't think these, these can be a project bundled in your collection system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll take that and, and see if we can address those.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Doer?
Yeah, thank you. And just a, a different kind of a, a concept. I've been talking with other city staff. I know that there's a real interest in doing public engagement on bigger projects, and I think this might be that kind of one, and maybe you already have. I know that you did a great job on the Watt Street, you know, with your team, and so it was very useful, and of course, that affects individual people's property, so I get it. This may not, but still people want to, want to know. So it might be something, you know, worthwhile to fold into that public engagement as you get further along.
Thank you. We'll look into that.
Great comments. May I get a motion on this item?
Yeah, I'll move, and also, we'll be having this conversation at the Ward 1 nab real soon. Thank you, Ms. Doer.
Fantastic. So we have a motion one? We have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Item B4, Councilmember Doer.
Yeah, thank you. I was wondering if some public works staff could come up and just summarize this project for us.
I, I do have a brief presentation. If they want to pop that up, it just has a few slides I can go through.
That'd be great.
Okay. Let me jump through. So the item that we have before you, whoops, we lost it there. I'll wait for that to jump up and see if I can go through here. The item that we have before you is approval of a design agreement with Stan, Stan Tech Consulting for lakeside capacity improvements. If I can... Sorry. The project is adjacent to Virginia Lake, between Country Club Drive and Hillcrest Drive. The existing sewer main in that section is a pinch point in the sewer design. Well, in the sewer system, we have larger pipes upstream and downstream of that location, so it, it reduces the capacity through that section through there. In the recent studies that we've been doing for, and modeling that we've been doing for the sewer system, this location was identified based on the current direction from council for infill development and some of those things, this, this location was identified, and so we're working to correct the, the flow capacity in this location. Funding for this project is also in the 22, well, design for this project is, is funded in the 22 fiscal year, under the, also under the Sewer Collection Systems category. And we're looking at constructing this project in the summer or fall of '22. We know that there's a number of other projects that are going on in that area. We have the Watt Neighborhood Project. There's a Tamwah Improvement Project there, the Rosewood Wash Storm Drain Improvements that are in that area. The city understands that, and so we're looking at consolidating some of these construction contracts to try to minimize the impact to the public in that area.
Okay. Just a few quick questions on that. Thank you so much. And it sounds like, and I thought this would be interesting to the whole council because they did a little digging, that within the McCarran Ring, it sounds like you've been analyzing the sewer systems?
That's correct.
And it sounds like you've come up with a few areas that are in this point where you go from, let's say, a 15-inch sewer pipe to eight, and then back to 15, which I think is the case here?
That's correct.
And do you know how many of those we've found so far?
I don't have a list of all the locations in there, but I know that we're currently looking to program some of these capacity issues.
Well, I've heard there was about six.
Okay.
So I didn't know if that's, you know, the current number. Maybe you'll find more.
I, I have a feeling that we might find more, but that sounds accurate.
Okay. Well, I think it's a really, you know, it's a job that needs to be done. You know, it's odd that we would have, go from big sewer pipes to small ones and big ones. I know there's projects that are, want, have expressed interest in coming in south of here, and I talked to at least one developer who said that the limitation on sewer capacity here impacted their project, and they could not build their project. I hope to find out more about where they stand on that project. But I guess what I'm wondering also, you mentioned the Rosewood Wash Project, though I know there was also a project to connect, do an overflow from the lake ditch through the Brighton Manor into Virginia Lake, which is going to cross the Watt Street and this sewer. That project, I thought, was going to dump into Virginia Lake, and I'm just wondering if that project's still in the books. Maybe you should also look at consolidating that with this Watt Street, Lakeside, Tamwah, Rosewood Lake Wash. In other words, you should look, I think there might be a fifth.
Okay. I will meet with Utility Services and make sure that we communicate that.
Okay. And it sounds like you're going to consolidate the contractors. Is that the idea?
That's the idea, to try to minimize, when you get multiple contractors, it can cause a little bit more disturbance, so we'll try to minimize that as much as possible.
I think that's, that's a really good idea, as you said, so that they're not all on these odd schedules, that this can be programmed and planned, so. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the effort that you guys are going through with the sewer analysis, and I also like the way that you're consolidating these potentially, so less impact to the neighbors.
Thank you.
Okay.
Fantastic. Great questions. May I get a motion?
Yeah, I would move to approve this project.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Madam Vice Mayor, I just had, I forgot to mention one other thing. The full funding for this project, and talking to Kerry Kosky, it sounds like rather than coming out of our own funds, the hope is that doing the design would maybe make this project eligible for infrastructure funds. Do you want to address that?
So we, we are seeing a large grant and, or a large amount of federal funding that's becoming available, so we're, we're trying to get ahead of some of our sewer projects and other projects that might have funding available, or that we could utilize some of the federal funding in this case, and this, this is one of them.
I think it's super smart, because the last time we had big infrastructure projects, they gave only six months to build, and most people did not have projects designed, and they ended up using a lot of the money to repave roads, not do these big, important projects. But having that design ready, I know the design ages, too, right? I mean, you can only do a design and have it hanging out there for so many years before after redesign. But I think you guys and, and manager, Mr. Manager, I think queuing up these projects is really smart, so that they could take advantage of the infrastructure funding or art, depending where, what bucket it's coming from. All right, thanks.
All right, just a quick question I just noticed on here. Item B1B, Black, where is it? Oh, no, Blue Moon Cells, Estate Sales? It says not in the city. Can you just give me a brief reason?
What, what that means is that if you are conducting business inside the city, you need a business license, but they are physically located outside of the city. And so if you want the actual physical location, we'll have to get Mr. Ferrato down here to get that.
Okay. No, I just, I've never seen that before.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you for asking that. I have asked the manager to restore the practice of showing where that individual's located. Sparks, unincorporated Washoe County, you know, Truckee. It just, I think it does help us know who's coming into the city to do services. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's move on. Madam Clerk, I believe, Item C11?
Hello, Madam Mayor. Yes, we are on Item C1.
Okay.
And we're going to go ahead and open C11, C12, and C13 at the same time.
Okay, perfect.
So if Carl Hall would like to read the bill introduction for C13, that would be great.
Okay, just before we do that, I'm just going to put on the record that the City Council is now opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given and correspondence received?
Proper notice was given, and no correspondence was received. In addition, we have no public commenters registered at this time.
All right, fantastic. Thank you so much. Do any council members need to make any disclosures? If there are none, I'm going to send it over to the ever-so-famous Carl Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance introduction, Bill Number 7195, Case Number LDC 22-00002, Plum Lane Business Park, ordinance to men, Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code, entitled zoning, rezoning of plus or minus 6.26-acre site consisting of seven parcels from plus or minus 5.2 acres of public facility to general commercial, plus or minus 0.68 acres of public facility to professional office, and plus or minus 0.38 acres of single-family residential, eight units per acre, to public office, PO. The plus or minus 6.26-acre site is generally located on the northeast corner of Yori Avenue and Kazaza Drive intersection, and east of Yori Avenue, and between Kazaza Drive and East Plum Lane, Ward 3.
All right. Thank you. At this time, staff presentation. How are you?
Thanks, Madam Mayor and Council. Kyle Chisholm, Associate Planner for the Record, here to present the Plum Lane Business So there are, this is a master plan amendment request that consists of two different, separate master plan amendments, as well as a corresponding neighborhood of plan, a plan, a sub-plan amendment to the Wells Avenue Neighborhood Plan, and the other half of the request is for zoning map amendments that essentially are three, have three different components, as shown on your screen there. So this is a street view of the existing building located on site, and I just want to, so why is the applicant requesting these changes? This image on the screen shows that existing building, which is a large office building that was formerly occupied by Nevada Bell or AT&amp;T, you may be familiar with it. It's on north of East Plum Lane. I'll show you a, a overall site here in just a second. The current zoning of public facility was appropriate for this former use, as it was a public utility company, but is really no longer serving its purpose, as it is very restrictive to the allowed uses that are allowed, and is limiting the ability for the now private ownership to reactivate and revitalize the site, which the master plan is heavy on. So this image shows an aerial view of the site, shown there with the red boundaries. As you can see, that, that's the large building in the, on the right-hand side of the screen, the surrounding parking lot, and then there's also a corresponding or related parking lot area in the L-shaped parcels up on the, on the corner of Yori and Kazaza on the left. The parking lot is currently non-conforming. If the council were to approve this request, it would bring the site into conformance, as that portion of that parking lot is in a single-family zoning district. So this vicinity map is to help orient the council on exactly where this is. So you see highlighted in blue there, that's Little Flower School. It's on the corner of Kitski Lane and East Plum Lane. And then the site, the subject site's highlighted in blue there, or, excuse me, in yellow there. And then just to the east of the site between the school and the site is the Nevada Air National Guard Headquarters or Facility. So this map is two different maps. It's intended to show you both the existing and the proposed master plan designations. So if I can get the cursor. So up here on, on the left, the left-hand map, this shows the existing master plan. There's two parcels that are master planned as single-family neighborhood, and then five of the parcels are currently master planned as public, quasi-public. And the proposal, should the council approve this request, would change all seven parcels to a suburban mixed-use master plan designation. The suburban mixed-use master plan designation is appropriate, given the proximity to transit, employment, and is consistent with the Plum Lane Corridor. Similarly, this is the map comparison of the zoning request. So again, you have a single-family, eight units per acre, two parcels, and then the remaining five are zoned public facility. The request is to change the west side, the four parcels on the west side of Yori to professional office, and general commercial on the east side of Yori, shown there. The general commercial zoning district, it is a, it allows a broad mix of uses, and, but the more intensive uses, such as a bar, require additional discretionary review. And for, for the entire site, because of its proximity to residential, it would, any significant development or intensification of the site would also require an additional discretionary review. That would have to be reviewed by Planning Commission. And so there on your screen are the master plan amendment findings that the council must make in order to approve the request. The first one discusses the master plan policies and priorities. As, as I mentioned, the, the, a portion of the site would come into conformance with the map, with both the master plan and zoning. It is an infill site, and our, as I mentioned, our, our master plan policies weigh heavily on infill development, where there's existing infrastructure, as well as revitalization of existing buildings. And so the proposal is is in conformance with the master plan. The second one is, talks about activities and compatibility. The proposed zoning, that's, the professional office zoning, is compatible, and I can kind of go back just to show you. The proposed professional office zoning that's directly adjacent to residential is, it is a compatible zoning with residential. It's very, very similar in the development standards, and is limited to office-type uses. Whereas, the general commercial portion of the request is separated from residential by streets, and, again, is compatible with the area. So, the third one is simply that public infrastructure and utilities are available or in place to, or planned to serve the site. And there are, being that it's an existing development, the facilities are in place to serve the site. And then, here are the two zoning map amendment findings that the Council must make in order to approve the request. First is that the amendment does not conflict with the provisions of NRS. And basically, that's the 15 findings in NRS that deal generally with compatibility, open space, infrastructure. Most of the things in the NRS provisions are addressed by our code, simply addressed by our code. And it, this request is in substantial conformance with that. And finally, again, the map, the amendment is in substantial conformance with the master plan, and this request is in substantial conformance. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and unanimously voted to recommend that the Council approve the request. And up there on your screen is the recommended motion. And I am available for any questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant's representative is here as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Kyle. I thought you did a great job. Good job. Okay, questions from council members. I'm going to start with Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have an opportunity to meet with the applicants, and I think this is in many different ways, more than just a zone change. It's really an opportunity to really build into stronger relationships with ever-changing climate and bringing it into our community. And so, if there's an opportunity for the applicant to kind of share with the Council, if they had met with, and would you share with me in terms of you guys' ideas of integrating yourselves with the community in some of those workshops? That'd be great to hear as well. I think it's more than just a zone change, which I think are, of course, I could make the findings inappropriate, but just the excitement around bringing Panasonic such a big player into our community. I think that'd be great for us to hear as well.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me is Rex Massey with Industrial Realty Group. This will allow for a comprehensive redevelopment of the site, bringing in, as Councilman Delgado said, a major corporation with high-paying jobs. That's really a key member of our community. And so, we think that this is truly a benefit, taking a site that's essentially been vacant for several years and transforming it into something new and vibrant.
One of the pieces is just, is the opportunities to kind of, the new technology that you guys have shared is something that you guys will be able to work with at this facility as well, right? It's not manufacturing necessarily is lab opportunities.
Correct. And I think Rex might be better suited to explain some of what the internal facilities will be.
Rex Massey with Industrial Realty Group. It's principally going to be an office, and there are some laboratory research components that are within that use and the tenant that we're negotiating with currently. I don't have a lot of details on what those exactly would be, but we think it's going to be a real positive and beneficial use of that, reuse of that building, and we're going to be investing a substantial amount of money into improving that entire site.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Councilwoman, do her.
Yeah, thanks. And you may want to stay up, or Kyle, come up. I think Mr. Delgado was getting at where my question was when I pressed the button to speak, which was, I'm a little confused about the ultimate use. I was confused whether you were keeping the building or demoing it, whether this whole parcel was going to become housing or some other kind of professional office. You mentioned a lab. Is there any more detail about that?
Again, Rex Massey with IRG. It will, we looked, to be honest with you, we looked at a lot of different things for that site, but at the bottom line, the company made a decision. It's going to continue to be office.
Office.
And it's going to look a lot like it used to be when it was Nevada Bell Building and AT&amp;T. There'll be a lot of employees. It'll be principal office use predominantly, and then, we're going to rehab the entire building and site for the new tenant. And so, that, you know, and very likely, given the term of the lease and the number of employees that we think we're going to bring in there, that site's going to look like an office site for the next 10 years.
I got you.
Unlikely to change.
And, okay, and then, the part across the street, I guess I was a little confused. So, there's the one main building, and then, on the west side, there were some other identified buildings?
No, it's just a parking lot right now. And so, we had moved to have it zoned PO with being sensitive to the adjacent residential housing. But then, it would also, it's going to continue to function as a parking lot, because we're going to need, we're going to need all that parking for the tenant that we have.
And when you say look like it used to, do you mean just like cleaned up, and are you improving the landscaping? Is that the concept, or?
Yes. The entire building will be, exterior treatments done, the landscaping will be redone, parking lots. There'll be, there'll be a fair amount of money that's spent on that, on that facility.
To improve the exterior and then rehab the interior for your new use?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a substantial interior bill.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Quick question. Will you be bringing in more workforce from Panasonic, or is this for your existing workforce that's already here? Do you know?
I would have to, we would have to defer that to them, so.
Okay. And first of all, I was just driving by there, and I thought, what is happening here? Because this is such an incredible piece of property. So, I'm really glad to see that you guys are going to revitalize it, because you're right, at one time, it was hustling and bustling. So, very cool. Alright, good. Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilman Bruckus?
Yeah, you know, I think it's a good example of a mid-century office building that we don't have a whole lot of here. And so, I looked at, you know, but of course, we never make a decision on any structure when we make master plan zoning changes. And I understand the need for satellite parking that'll be improved, and I think PO then is a good use there. I was a little concerned and questioning of the GC, and you explained that you felt that was necessary for laboratory use. And Mr. Chisholm, what is to the east? Is that Snow's, or is that the Guard Building?
Guards to the west.
Madam Clerk, do you mind if you pull the PowerPoint back up? I can show you. Just to the east of the PO proposal?
No, the general commercial, the main parcel.
Oh, that's the Nevada National Guard Building?
Oh, it is the Guard. Okay, okay.
I didn't hear.
Because, you know, I might not support, I mean, it's kind of patchy there, but we are in a planned framework that we understand, which is very neighborhood-oriented. And so, if the neighbor was the school, the general commercial might be a little more intensive than a school would, you know, an elementary school would need next to them in that setting. But the Guard is there, and we have had issues in the past with laboratories. Animal testing is the one that, you know, seems to come up the most. What is the procedure for laboratory in a general commercial parcel?
So, there, a general laboratory is allowed by right in the zone. So, if, but, again, with, with any sort of intensification or development on the site, it's going to trigger that additional review. But if it's a use that's just allowed by right, that isn't intensifying the site, then it would, it would be allowed by right.
Well, let's get real specific on this, okay? Because when you say that review, that would be administrative site plan review or a review by the Planning Commission?
Because it's directly adjacent to residential, it would be a Planning Commission decision.
Okay, so the Planning Commission would see it if they added an intensification to the existing use of office, correct?
Right.
So, a secondary use of a laboratory would go to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, and there, a little bit of difference there. So, if it's clearly an accessory use, for example, the office is clearly the dominant use, then it would be allowed as an accessory use.
And that would be an administrative decision?
Yeah, it would just be allowed, yeah.
Well, what is the definition of an accessory in a laboratory setting? Would it be one that gets some Nevada emissions permit?
If I can clarify on the lab, this wouldn't be a lab where there would be animal testing. It's a very small component that would be an accessory use to the overall, it's like a technology lab, for lack of a better term. So, it's not producing fumes, it's not producing, they're not experimenting. It's hard to describe. It's above my intellectual level, if you know what I mean, but it's to deal with the technology that they're producing.
Yeah, no, I understand. It'd be a materials lab, and the call would be administrative, whether or not it's accessory or not. If it's not accessory, it would be a second primary use, and it would go for the Planning Commission review. That's how I understand it. Is that correct?
That's how I understand it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I think it's always good to line the paths forward when we're working with the new code and a change of use. Thanks.
Alright, thank you so much. Okay, good job, Kyle. Thanks again. Okay, at this time, I think, is that in your work, Councilmember Delgado? Go ahead.
If you could put the motion back up. Cool. I move to uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adopt the requested master plan amendment by resolution referred to the zoning map amendment for a second reading and adoption, subject to the conformance reviewed by the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you.
Alright, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to item C2, which is an ordinance introduction for LDC 22-00013, to be read by the city attorney.
Ordinance introduction, bill number 7196, case number LDC 22-00013, Prism North Valley's Distribution Center. Ordinance to men, title 18, chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning rezoning, a plus or minus seven acre site consisting of two parcels from mixed-use suburban to industrial commercial. The subject site is located on the north side of North Virginia Street, plus or minus 545 feet west of its intersection with Double Back Road. Site has a master plan land use designation of industrial, Ward 4.
Alright, thank you so much. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to let the record reflect that we are now opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? Any correspondence received?
Madam Mayor, proper notice was given. We did receive one comment and correspondence to this item specifically in opposition from Lawrence Pavelonis. We have no additional public comment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Do any council members need to make any disclosures? If there are none, staff presentation. Kyle, you're coming back. It's your day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, Kyle Chisholm, Associate Planner for the Record, here to present the Prism North Valley's Distribution Center. So, here's an aerial view of the subject site. It's located on the north side of North Virginia Street, just, and south of 395. It consists of two parcels, that's a little less, or exactly seven acres. It is in an area that is designated as industrial per our master plan. And, excuse me. So, why is the applicant requesting this? As I just stated, the master plan designation for this site and the surrounding area is industrial. The current zoning of suburban mixed, or, excuse me, mixed-use suburban does not conform to the industrial master plan designation. And so, we've seen a lot of these come forward in the recent years. One of my PowerPoint got messed up somehow. But what I was trying to show, I had, I had two images on here. The first was a 2016 image, kind of just trying to show what's transformed over the years. As you can see, this is the, this is the current image. This is 2021 image. And so, this, as, as our master plan was adopted, and we started seeing all these zone change, zone changes come in, this is what the surrounding area looks like today. You can see a lot of warehouse, distribution-type facilities, industrial uses. Here's a existing and proposed zoning map, just showing the existing zoning, which is mixed-use suburban. And the, should the Council approve this request, that's what the zoning map would look like on the right, which shows that the site would change to industrial commercial. The industrial commercial is compatible with the surrounding area. As I just mentioned, there's been a lot of zone changes, as you know, coming through the Council for review. Many have been approved. And here is a list of, kind of outlining some of the allowed uses and the type of uses. So, as you can see right there, on the top, residential, mixed-use suburban allows for residential. The industrial master plan designation is highly, highly deters residential nearby. So, industrial commercial does not allow for residential. So, this would, it would eliminate essentially the ability for residential to be put on the site, which it could today. And so, that's one of the main components with this change. The master plan indicates that residential's not compatible with industrial. And so, in order for the Council to approve this request, it again must make two findings. The, the first finding refers to the NRS provisions. As I mentioned on the last item, they deal primarily with compatibility, natural resources, open space, and different, and infrastructure. There's been a variety of infrastructure improvements. Roadway improvements are planned along North Virginia Street to serve this, the growth in this area. And so, the, the request is in substantial conformance with this. And then, again, the amendment is in substantial conformance with the master plan. Well, by approving this request, the Council would be bringing the site into conformance with the master plan. And the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously that the Council approve the requested zoning map amendment, and I, again, am here for any questions you may have.
Alright, good job, Kyle. Okay, Councilman Bruckus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me ask you, is IB still a zoning district that we have? No. Okay, so it's just I and IC? Okay. And then, one thing I've noticed, someone actually brought it to my attention, and then, I started zeroing in on it. I think it's relevant to the, on this one, is the, for like 30 years, the staff reports to the Planning Commission that come up to us always showed the surrounding land uses. And when I mean land uses, I mean what you would go out and eyeball out on a property to help you understand not only what's the zoning, the conformity, but really, the reality of what is the built environment there. And a couple of months ago, that dropped from the staff reports, as I can tell. And so, when I look at the parcel, and if you bring up the map, you know, the aerial, and I, you know, I don't do site visits, sitting at the council level, as I, as I have in other capacities in the past. But in the subject site, for example, it would appear, and I always get mixed up here, north to me would be, if you're looking at the two boxes to the left, and that looks like, is it residential there?
It is a, it's a mobile home park.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a non-conforming use.
So, the tables that used to be written would say, existing land uses, surrounding land uses. So, north would be Mobile Home Park. West is, what is to the west there?
That, that's the Mobile Home Park, just to the west of the site. And I'll use my point.
There's a Mobile Home Park to the west also?
No, just, just to the west.
Well, I call that north.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And then, so, to the south, what's that, Earth First Recycling?
It's an industrial recycling facility.
Okay, industrial recycling. What is to the, well, I would call it east, but maybe I've got my Compass Health brands. What is that land? Is that? I've got my Compass Health brands. What is that land? Is that vacant land?
You're talking about this?
Yeah, is that vacant?
Trying to. Yeah, that's been since.
Okay.
So that was a little older image, so you could see.
Okay, okay.
And then this is the Amazon.
Yeah, yeah. You know, that brings up, oh, I'll wait to go around to other questions.
Councilwoman Durk.
Thank you. Kyle, you mentioned earlier that, I might have misheard you, but I thought you said the mixed-suburban use highly discourages residential use. That's what I thought I heard you say.
Opposite. So let me pull the.
Well, that pink one was a good one for me.
The pink one?
Yeah.
Okay. So answer your question, industrial-commercial does not allow for residential suburban, the current, mixed-use suburban allows for residential.
Right, okay. So I obviously misheard it. And when this gets rezoned, presuming it's approved, you're still going to have this band around it that's the pink or the shaded, looks pink. And that is still the mixed-suburban, mixed-use suburban. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, and then we were just talking about the mobile home park that's already still there, that's kind of sandwiched, would be sandwiched between. So I guess I'm just wondering how that all plays out. If this is rezoned, industrial-commercial, we've got existing residential, do they have to do special notification, or setback, or buffer, or?
No, no, there's no, because it's not residentially zoned, and it's a non-conforming use. It's not even, the mobile home park use isn't even allowed in the current.
So it's already non-conforming?
It's non-conforming. There's no, just upon development of the site, I think is what you're getting at, there would be no discretionary review for residential adjacency.
So here's where I get a little challenged. When we've come in and remaster-planned, and suddenly an existing use, this one may be not relevant because it already was non-conforming, but the next one that's coming up on our agenda, we have single-family homes that have been rendered non-conforming with the master plan change. And what I hear you saying is because they're such non-conforming, because we just did a blanket change of the zoning to mixed-use suburban, you're saying they've lost their ability to be residential and have the protection, as I'll call it, that go with residential?
Not, so, protection as far as residential zoning, yes.
Yes.
Protection as far as continuing to utilize the site.
They can still stay residential.
They can still, they're not, nobody's going to lose their home.
Yeah.
They're not going to get kicked out, but they can't expand without coming forward to council to expand a non-conforming use.
Okay, but just to this point, and I think I still have 10 seconds or something, just to this point, where you have like residential adjacency with industrial-commercial, and that always brings up a concern, and we've dealt with it in North Valleys before, we always are looking for things like buffers to protect the existing residential, things like that, whether it's landscape buffers or something, setbacks. You're saying when we rezoned, they lost that ability to, or lost that requirement to do those kind of things?
Yes, the residential adjacency standards apply to residential zones. They don't, they do not apply to non-residential zones.
Okay, it's the zone, not the actual use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It does concern me, but I hear what you're saying.
Madam Mayor? All right, thank you. Yes, I would agree with that, although I wonder if that has a trailer overlay, and if trailer overlays are residential zones, because they are zones. So that, what does not have a trailer overlay?
This one does not, no.
Okay. In addition to my request, that it would be helpful to me to understand the on-the-ground table that was done for, you know, decades of surrounding use, I also, it came to me, to my attention, and I brought it up to the manager immediately after, at regional planning, we had a request that came up from the city of Reno, and it showed a map that was different than the map, the aerial map that regional planning prepared. I think you and I, I think it was your case, actually.
Yeah.
And right here, you have two different maps, too. So I just want to emphasize the confusion in using, and I don't know, I mean, something operationally is not working out in that we are getting maps in the same case from us with two different aerial views. I just, that's confusing. And I do want, and it raised a question to me, is in the one that you showed, the, I'll say the large industrial to the east is how I call it over there, and I'm probably wrong, it's probably to the north, it looked like it had an SMU zoning. What zoning did that enjoy? If we could go back to that map, what is that proposed zoning, that zoning right there, to up from it, up from it, is where I see a big box, and it's Zone MS?
That's correct.
So why isn't this one able to be MS also?
It is able to be. They didn't come, they didn't voluntarily come in with the request.
So why doesn't it stay MS?
Well, its master plan is industrial, so it has to change. The zoning has to conform with the master plan.
Uh huh.
And so the applicant is voluntarily applying to do that, whereas eventually the city is going to have to come through and do this for this whole area and citywide for all the non-conformities with the master plan.
So you're saying this.
Mr. Riley, do you want to come up? And Councilwoman Breckus, you're over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Mike Riley with Christie Corporation. Just to clarify a couple of issues that have come up. The reason that we chose IC rather than industrial for this parcel is based on kind of the surrounding uses. IC would ensure that you don't have those heavy industrial uses, like the concrete batch plant, for example, or large outdoor manufacturing facilities aren't allowed, which would help. And then the city of Reno is actually, planning staff is in the process of rezoning. They're going to initiate zone changes to rezone this entire area into conformance with. So what you'll see is, in the future, all the surrounding zoning will either become industrial or IC through a city-initiated amendment. So to develop under the MS standards, although, for example, a warehouse would be allowed, those standards within the zone itself are not really conducive to industrial-type uses, in terms of circulation and bringing the building towards the front, setback doesn't allow for proper circulation, that sort of thing. So that's why this is being brought forward voluntarily, kind of ahead of the city's initiated plan.
Okay, thank you. I have just one more question. Councilwoman Breckus, you're over two and a half minutes, so hold on one second. Go ahead, Councilwoman Durk.
I guess I'm for our staff. Just, I am, I'm still puzzling over when they lost their protections as a residential use when the master plan zoning changed. So do they get notified of this effort to city-initiated that Mr. Riley just talked about, rezone? Like, everything pink here is MS?
Yes, yes. They were notified when it previously changed to mixed-use suburban, and they'll be notified again should it move forward to, you know, the city-initiated zone change.
Is there a city-initiated effort underway, and when is that expected?
It's in process. I'm not sure, it's our long-range planning division. I'm not sure exactly the timeframe when that's going to be brought forward, but it is being worked on and reviewed.
Okay.
And it's for a much broader area than this, too.
Okay. So, I don't know, I've kind of lost north, southeast, west with this further conversation, but the bottom of the map, that's pink, what is there now? Is that houses or mobile homes or?
Go back to the ortho view. So you can see, south, all, just across the street, all warehouses.
So the warehouses are in this area that's mixed-suburban, mixed-use suburban?
Yes.
I got you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Councilwoman Webber, did you have a question? Okay. Councilwoman Breckus, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, in my world, the city staff is working on 24-hour bar operations in midtown, not going off and redo, rezoning this. And I objected at the time about this effort. And I think it is, when you broad-brush, rezone your city, rather than doing area planning, you get a lot of piecemeal trips to the planning commission, city council. But am I to understand that the building adjacent to the top of this one that is an Amazon, I think you said, is non-conforming? We created a brand-new where?
No, it's not non-conforming. Warehouse and distribution is allowed in the mixed-use suburban designation. As Mike alluded to, it just has different development standards. It can be, it can be more difficult to develop. There's building orientation requirements and such.
Well, to me, that's okay. And if they're going for IC for a distribution warehouse on this smaller parcel, I want to make sure that this going to IC is not a workaround some of our density and bulk standards that are enjoyed in the SMU, so they can get more building and more diesel traffic next to these trailers. So I'm having a hard time, and I'm presuming that the zoning feels pretty correct to me. But I also had questions about sewer capacity. I don't think we received a sewer allocation list from Public Works in about five or six months. I was going through my files with the manager on those the other day. Where do we stand on North Valley's sewer for additional uses? And where is the most recent version of that allocation table?
It's my understanding, so we haven't received, oh.
For the record, John Lance, we're Director of Public Works. So we have, we have not had a lot of requests out there. We have had two since August. We're down to about 26,000 gallons of the amount that the council has allocated up there. And what's been used has been a little less than 30,000 gallons.
Okay.
So it's been coming in, and it's going to be a discussion that we'll be bringing back to council as we talk about the connection fee rates and sewer capacity in general in early 2022. And the memo will be coming to you shortly. I reviewed it yesterday, and so I expect you'll have it by the end of the week.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I think originally it was every month was the direction, and I understand now why it's fallen off. I'll look for that. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to send it to you, Councilwoman Webber, if there are no further questions from council.
Thank you. I am ready to make a motion.
Okay, please.
I move to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission and refer bill number 7196 for a second reading and adoption.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, sending it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item C3, which is an ordinance introduction to be read by the city attorney for LDC 2100077.
Okay, at this time, let the record reflect that the city council is opening the public hearing. Madam Clerk, was proper notice given? A correspondence received?
Proper notice was given, and no correspondence was received.
All right, do any council members have any disclosures? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to send it over to Carl Hall.
Ordinance introduction, bill number 7197, case number LDC 21-00077, 3715 Warren Way rezoning. Ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled zoning, a rezoning of plus or minus 0.65 acre site located west of Warren Way, plus or minus 306 feet north of its intersection with West Peckham Lane, from single-family, three units per acre, to multifamily, 21 units per acre. Site has a master plan land use designation of suburban mixed-use, Ward 2.
All right, thank you. Anyone desire staff presentation on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Grace Whitehead, Assistant Planner, for the record, here to discuss the zone change on Warren Way. All right. The .66 acre site is located west of Warren Way, in between Moana and Peckham Lane. The applicant is requesting a zone change from single-family, three units per acre, to multifamily, 21 units per acre, which is consistent with our master plan. Key issues identified during this review included compatibility and conformance with the master plan. So the current zoning of SF3 is no longer conforming with the suburban mixed-use master plan. The Reimagine Reno master plan was adopted in 2017, where it was given the designation of suburban mixed-use. In this designation, it promotes concentrated nodes of higher intensity development. The second phase of the Title 18 Land Development Code updates, anticipates a review and reconciliation process for the zoning map and master plan land use inconsistencies. I thought this slide was important to include. This was intentionally master-planned for more density because of the proximity to services, including public transit. On this map, found on RTC's website, it demonstrates the site surrounded by bus stops. So each black dot on that screen is a bus stop. At the time the applicant submitted this request, they submitted a zone change request to MF30, because MF30 was the only residential zoning compatible with the master plan. The applicant voluntarily amended their request to MF21 based on council direction and feedback from the neighbors at the neighborhood advisory board meeting. MF21 would allow for 13, approximately 13 residential units for this specific site. I wanted to point out some key uses allowed in each zoning district, but a comprehensive list of all of the zoning, all of the uses allowed, or not allowed, is included in the staff report. This slide also provides a comparison of development standards in each zone. This is a current Google street view of the, across the street from the site, to show kind of the area and what the area looks like currently. In conclusion, staff can make the applicable findings and recommends approval of the zoning map amendment. This was unanimously approved at, or recommended approval at Planning Commission as well. Here is the recommended motion, and I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilwoman Durk, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Ms. Whitehead. Can you just step there for a sec? First of all, I wanted to compliment you on your presentation. I think this is one of your first, not your first, but one of, in the early stages. And I think you covered the points really well, which is one reason I wanted to.
Thank you.
Bring you up here and give you a chance to tell your story. I also wanted to thank the applicant, because what they've done is, many people in this area were being forced into doing MF30 because the, I have to always say this right, the mixed-use suburban only allowed MF30. This council, we did a change, and we allowed lower-density units in there, MF14, MF21. And this came up at the NAB, and I was just reviewing the minutes earlier today, where the NAB members expressed a lot of concern about MF30, and mentioned to the applicant that, you know, changes were coming. And the applicant did, in response, change their project to be MF21. I did some further research, and the owner of the parcel, I think, is Ms. Trincaro. And she had actually written us a letter. She was very opposed to a number of other developments around there because of the density. Said she was planning to come in, but she wanted to ensure there's proper parking. She objected, I think, to Lakewood. She objected to the 22 on Lakeside. But, so I just, since she is obviously concerned about parking, I want to make sure this is really a point to the development consultant, that when you bring the project, that, you know, hopefully it'll be consistent with that street. Because as you showed in your map, we've just put a whole bunch of apartment-zoned projects there. I mean, you can build, let's say, zero-lot line individual homes as well. I think the parcel right next door is MF14. So what I want to make sure is that you, as the planner and the developer, understand that one thing I'm looking for is compatibility. So if you have MF14 individual homes next door, they have sufficient setback, side lot especially, because, you know, the way these are all arrayed. And that it looked like, and I don't know the condition of Warren Way, but as I recall from our previous discussions, it's narrower, there wasn't a lot of parking room on there. As you start infilling with all these apartments, you know, I want to make sure that sufficient parking is allowed. So I know we're not talking about the project, and I've kind of lost track of the bells. Is that the 30-minute, the 30-second?
Yes, 30 minutes.
Which corner am I looking in? Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I couldn't see that. But anyway, as you come forward, I want to make sure that you take a close look at compatibility, totally for infill, but often just a five-foot additional setback can make all the difference in the world to the people right next door. So, you know, message for you, Mr. Wilson, on that subsequent planning. And I understand they're already in-house doing some planning. So, the last thing I wanted to mention is, I didn't see the NAB comments attached to the planning commission report or this report. And I think we've been having some challenges, Mr. Manager, on that. And I just want to make sure that, you know, they meet, they discuss, they're thoughtful. I want to make sure their comments are attached to the record. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Go on.
All right, any other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, so I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I am motioning to approve this zone change to MF21. And I just want you to think about what I said when you actually come forward with the actual project. Thank you.
All right. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Madam Clerk, sending it back to you.
All right, Madam Mayor, we're moving on to our F items. We're on item F1, Catalytic Converter Ordinance Adoption to be read by the city attorney.
All right. Sending it right back to you, Carla Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance Adoption, ordinance number 6611. Ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 18.10 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled offenses against property. Creating new ordinance, RMC 8.10.110 prohibiting possession of a catalytic converter unless otherwise permitted and other matters properly relating there too.
All right. Any council members want a staff presentation?
No.
If there are none, I've got a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item F2, ordinance adoption related to, read by the city attorney.
All right. Sending it right back to you, Mr. Carla Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance Adoption, ordinance number 6612. Ordinance amending Reno Municipal Code Title 8.23, Parks and Recreation, Chapter 8.23.035, authority to, of Park Rangers to provide for expansion of jurisdiction from only parks and recreation facilities to also include all city trails, open spaces and public property within 350 feet of the shore of the Truckee River within city limits, together with other matters properly relating there too.
Moved it up.
All right, I have a motion.
And Madam Mayor, for the record, we did receive one letter of correspondence in favor from Savannah Hughes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, I had a motion from Vice Mayor and then a second from Councilwoman Weber. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, sending it right back to you, Madam Clerk.
All right. Item C3, or I'm sorry, F3, redistricting for 2021.
All right, thank you so much.
This is ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6613. Ordinance to amend Title 1, Chapter 1.02.010 of the Reno Municipal Code titled Ward Boundaries and Official City Map to change the city of Reno Ward boundaries on the official city map as required by Section 1.050 of the Reno City Charter and providing other matters properly relating there too. The decision must be passed by a vote of at least five sevenths of the city council.
All right, thank you.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Madam Mayor, moving on to item G11, which is an appointment to the E911 Advisory Board.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Do you have any public comment on this item?
We have none.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Discussion potential appointments to the E911 Advisory Board. That would be who?
Chief Marshall Kimberly Vine.
Moved to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item G12, which is an appointment to the Reno Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, I'm going to send that over to Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to continue this item. I've heard from the Arts and Culture Commission, they did not have time to consider the applicants and make a recommendation. So I'm
Second.
holding off favor of that.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Moving on to item G21, which is city council appointments for the annual appointments of 2022.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
Madam Mayor, we have none.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask council members, are there any boards or commissions that you would like to step down from?
Yes.
Councilwoman Doerr, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Madam Mayor, I've taken a close look at the chart that we were provided, shows that I have about 14 appointments. And I want to share the experiences and the workload amongst my colleagues. So I'm looking to maybe transition off a few of these boards. And the first one I wanted to mention was the Building Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. And I have reached out to Councilmember Weber and she did express interest. I don't know if she still has interest, but I would be interested in making that change.
Okay.
Second.
All right. So that sounds like a motion?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Um, the
Councilwoman Doerr.
Yeah, the next one was the Community Development Block Grant. I've really appreciated being on that. It gave me a lot of insight. A lot of the properties that were eligible for Community Development Block Grants have been moved out of my ward. And I think I should give this opportunity to someone who, you know, has more properties and the time to devote to this right now. It's up, you know, I don't know if anyone is interested. I briefly spoke to Ms. Breckus because she informed me that she actually was one of the people that encouraged the formation of this subcommittee. So I don't know if she has interest or if someone else does.
I'd be willing to take that because some of the areas that, although, you know, we haven't seen a map lately, it'd be great to get one. I think some of the areas that were eligible moved into my ward.
Exactly. I was thinking.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And then the last one I wanted to talk about here today was the Reno Arts and Culture Commission. It's been a huge privilege to serve as the liaison for seven years. I feel like I have, you know, we've taken it to the next level during my tenure. But I also know that it's, we used to have three arts and culture groups. We had the Sierra Arts, we had Art Town, and we had the Arts and Culture. And we divided those amongst two colleagues so that, you know, not just one person was dealing with arts. But now those other committees don't exist. And so I'm kind of opening it. I know Councilmember Reese had expressed interest, you, Madam Mayor, had expressed some interest. And so I just, I open it to the body to see where people are.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask any council members if they wish to serve on Arts and
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to serve or I'm happy to be your alternate.
Okay, great. Then I will go on Arts and Culture.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, so I guess I'd make that motion.
Okay, perfect.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, I think I'm down with everybody at this point. Kind of a leveling of the workload here, so I appreciate that.
All right. Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Weber.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to bring attention to the North Valleys Water Subcommittee, just to bring some attention. I don't know, I've had a discussion with Councilwoman Doerr. And I kind of feel like this one could go away. But on the other hand, she brought up a great comment about the fact that maybe we just leave it and only, you know, start off with one meeting a year. But that would have to be changed by the bylaws, I guess, or the rules of that committee. So I don't think we need to spend a lot of time and effort on that because those folks have the same opportunities as everybody else to come. But I like the idea of maybe keeping it to one meeting. And then if there was a necessity, we could have another. So I would like to ask that. And possibly if, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go right ahead.
Yeah, I had a, in talking to Councilmember Weber about the other topic, this topic came up. And my point of view was that we set up the committee because we were experiencing a lot of flooding. There was a lot of concern in the North Valleys about it. Myself, Councilmember Reese and Councilmember Weber were put on the committee. I still think it serves a useful function, especially given that three and a half years later, we paid a fairly large settlement out there, you know, in that area. And we've already had some flooding this year out there. And we don't know what the future will bring, but I think it's a good move, as Councilmember Weber said, to maintain contact with people out there. And so, for example, recently, we approved the reinjection program of taking treated effluent and putting it in American Flat. There's been a lot of concern out there about that project. I think it'd be useful to give a presentation on what we're doing, you know, and make sure people know what's happening. So it is true, they can hear about it here and they can hear about it at Tama. But often, the general public doesn't attend those kind of meetings. So I think Councilmember Weber had a good thought. I mean, I concur with her thought that we keep it. But we do meet. During COVID, we did not meet. And so therefore, they start getting out of the loop. And it's good to bring them back in the fold and in the loop and know what we're doing. So just some thoughts.
If I could.
Yeah.
I just want to remind folks that through this, these are not our constituents. However, they, you know, they're our county folks, our county neighbors. And I think it's really important. And many of the folks have come to our meetings and are quite aware of what's going on. So by reducing it, and then if there is a necessity, I think it's really important. But I do want to bring that to folks' attention, to the council and to the public, that, you know, we are trying to work with them. And if we were going to continue this, I think that the county commission representatives ought to be part of this as well. But I think for now, this is a great start to be able to bring it about if we need to and have the one meeting.
Councilwoman Doerr.
Thank you very much. So I'm just looking to the city manager. That would have to be re-agendized for that modification, correct?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so we can't take any action on that here today? All right, thank you.
And let me ask, if I may, follow up to Councilwoman. I don't believe that the bylaws actually set any number of meetings, but it's just something to check into. It just said we would meet from time to time. So maybe, there may be no need to change anything. I don't know. I don't recall.
That's correct. The bylaws state that it's an as-needed body, so there is no required meeting.
Right. Yeah. So I don't think there is any, obviously, no bylaws change needed. I think it's just at the call of the chair and the manager and, you know.
Okay. All right. Do you need anything from us, Madam Clerk?
I think just a motion to approve everybody's reappointments if there's no additional changes other than Councilmember Doerr's.
Okay. Oh, wait. Go ahead. Councilwoman Breckus.
You asked if anyone wants off boards. I'd like to propose an opportunity to get on a board. And that board is RTC. So I'd like to, I see that appointment is up right now. Ms. Jarden holds it. I have an interest in it. So I'd like to nominate myself by a motion to the RTC board.
Okay. All right. Councilwoman Breckus has given us a motion. Do you have a second? Go ahead, Councilwoman Weber. Okay. All right. Motion dies, lack of a second.
All righty. Thank you. Madam Mayor, since you took the Arts and Culture Board, I also see in my notice of all the region's agendas recently that the flood's moving on to a new phase. And I'd be willing to take that off your hands if you would like to depart from that board. But I'm not hard and fast for that as I have, you know, consistently requested the RTC appointment.
Yeah. I have no objection to that. I would like to sit down with you and kind of give you a little rundown of where we're at and what we're doing over there.
Absolutely.
It's actually, a lot is happening in a very positive direction, I think. You know, we have new representatives over there from the county, so it might be really good. I'd love to meet with you and talk about
Okay.
where we're at and what we're doing. I've actually really enjoyed it. I think George is really good over there. He's moving in the right directions. But I think, you know, there's a lot of challenges too when it comes to floods. So love to talk to you about it.
Okay. Well, the question is, are you willing to get off it today? Sure. Okay, so I'll move to put me on to flood.
I apologize. So we're not agendized for resignations from boards that are currently appointed to. So we would need to re-agendize Mayor Shivi's resignation and then reappointment to that. So these are only eligible appointments that are not currently filled
Okay, so this one
on today's agenda.
This one doesn't have a term that expires on an annual basis. I thought it did.
That's correct. So Mayor Shivi's appointment on Truckee Meadows Flood Management expires on December 31st, 2022. So it would be up at that point unless she chooses to resign prior to that date.
Okay, we'll have that conversation.
Councilwoman Breckus, and then we'll go from there and get it on the future agenda if she wants to go on after we have
Sounds good.
the conversation about what's happening over there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thanks. And Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would love, just to your point, which is that transition, I have done arts and culture seven years. I would love an opportunity to meet with you or, and/or Councilmember Reese, just to tell you what's happening, what are the moving parts, what's open for appointment. That's another reason I held the appointment. I thought people should have an opportunity to make that appointment. So if we can just get that on the schedule, that'd be great.
You bring a good point up when we do this, because a lot of times you're just walking into that first meeting and you don't really know
Exactly.
sort of what's happening and
Yeah.
sort of the structure. Every board works a little bit differently. And the one thing I'd like to ask too, I know a lot of you are on a lot of different boards. I sit on boards, like you guys sit on boards, that some take more time than others, some meet more than others. And so they can be very, very complex or some may not be at all. I'm curious to know what I would like to see, and maybe, Madam Clerk, this is over in your department due to charter, are there certain boards that we can appoint community members to? I know some are, like, they are done by the legislature. Our CVA is one of those, I believe. I believe Airport is one of those. But some that are sort of governed by the charter, is it possible to put community members on there? There's some really incredible people that have asked to serve. And I wonder, can we have a representative in our place if we so wanted to do that?
I'm only familiar with one, but if you'd like, I'd be happy to do the research and then come back to the body with more information at a later time.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
I have one more.
Sure, go ahead.
I'd like to know if anyone is interested in the park, recreation and parks. I love it, but I have other obligations and it's hard. I, I still make it, but.
Which, which, which day of the month is that? Do you recall?
It's the second Tuesday.
It's the second Tuesday. Let me, let me look at something quickly.
What time is that?
Third, um, six o'clock.
And where do they meet?
Five thirty.
McKinley.
I'm sorry.
McKinley, okay. Councilwoman Breckus, weren't you on that committee before?
I was, I was, but I'm afraid that my NAB meets, no, my NAB meets on a Monday. Um, I think I can take it, um, I, I think I can take it over.
All right, and I, I, I mean, I, I don't mind serving on there as well. I just need to kind of make sure my schedule can do that, so.
Let's roll this one over to January then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, do we need to give you a motion for that?
Well, so at this time, I think we're just going to reappoint you to the position you would resign, and then we'll do a reappointment at a later date.
December.
Okay, great. So I just need a motion to reappoint to all of the current positions outside of the ones that Councilmember Doerr has addressed.
All moved.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Wait, just, just a second. I'm not going to support because it involves a roll-up of reappointing Ms. Jarden to the RTC. I think we've always worked very well collaboratively, and, um, you know, she and I came on at the same time. I've had, uh, a strong interest in that, but it's fine, you know, she has the votes, she does have the votes. I supported her for Vice Mayor and, and, you know, was glad to do that. But at this point in time, because, although this rolls up a lot of appointments, I can't support one that rolls her up to continue over at RTC. I think the last year has shown that RTC needs some new, uh, leadership over there. And so I'm not going to support, um, this vote, thank you.
I have a motion.
Madam Mayor, before the vote's taken.
Go, go ahead, Ms.
I just want to, uh, push back on, uh, Councilmember Breckus' comment about the RTC. I understand that Ms. Breckus would like to be on RTC, but I think what we have learned in the last several months is that, um, all of us have some role in what happens in this community. And Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jarden and Madam Mayor have, uh, really done the work. Uh, I think that is, uh, the result of which is now the, uh, the, it looks like the bus strike is going to end. And a lot of that work occurs behind the scenes and after hours, nights and weekend. And so really my point is, is just thanking both Vice Mayor Jarden and the mayor for their work in bringing this, uh, you know, parts to bear, uh, that we have a role in helping the RTC. Ultimately, I think there are lots of things happening at the RTC that many of us may have an opinion on, but we don't have a lot of oversight of that body. And so I'm looking forward to, uh, Vice Mayor's continued, uh, efforts there in that body. And I think also, uh, Mr. Delgado, uh, who has, again, continued to explain leadership over there at the RTC. It's a complicated board, and not all the boards are as complicated. Uh, but I think my colleagues deserve a great deal of credit for the work that they are putting in over there. And I know that, um, you know, it's not always visible what that work is. So I thank, uh, both the Vice Mayor and the Mayor and Councilmember Delgado for the work that has gone in to, uh, bring this most recent strike to a close.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Reese. All right, go ahead, Councilman Delgado.
I just want to add onto that, uh, it's, uh, the Vice Mayor's leadership has, has, there's been tremendous. And we've gone through lots of, uh, opportunities to, uh, work with our, and continue to be engaged with our community, especially during the pandemic. Uh, her push and drive to make sure that, uh, our community's been taken care of, even during the strike, has been commendable. And so, uh, I really appreciate just working alongside her. Uh, and so do our other regional partners, because this is a regional, uh, board, which it's important that you're able to work with our colleagues in the City Sparks and Washoe County, and especially, uh, NDOT as well. So thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Delgado. And that's the one thing I have learned on regional boards. You have to have those relationships with the other people that serve on there to be able to get something done. And I think you've done a really, really good job and sat down, done the work, and have been involved in transportation and infrastructure and been passionate about it the entire time. I think you've done a phenomenal job, so, um, kudos to you and Councilman Delgado, because I know it has not been easy. It's, you know, transportation is never easy. It's, it's always very controversial, but I think you guys have done a really good job. And you work well with your colleagues, I get a lot of great feedback about that. And I think that that's important, that you can go on a board and be effective, so I appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Weber.
I, I want to jump in on that conversation real quickly. I appreciate both of our RTC members. I, um, had the, the privilege of working, um, when I was a county commissioner, um, on the RTC. I was chairman of the, of, of the RTC, um, in 2014, um, when, uh, I think that's when you came on. So I just want to say, um, thank you so much, um, maybe in 2013, um, for the service. Um, second of all, I want to let, um, Councilwoman Breckus know that it is six o'clock and it's the third Tuesday.
Okay, let's just move it off to this, January.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you that information on the record. Thanks.
Okay. Madam Clerk, anything else?
So we have a motion and a second.
Oh, okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay.
Great, moving on to item H1, which is City Council comments.
Devil's, uh, bar, devil's bar. What's it called?
Poor Devil's Saloon.
I was going to come back to it.
Huh?
Devil's Saloon.
Poor Devil's Saloon.
Whole Devil?
Poor.
Poor Devil.
Come on up, Lance.
Over there.
Do we have anything for H1, just so that, since we've already opened it?
Any council members have anything for H1?
Madam Mayor, I do.
Okay, go right ahead, and then I'm going to bring Lance right up. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, and I'll be brief. Um, I wanted to make sure that my colleagues were aware, um, on December 11th, uh, I'm going to be participating in Reno housing discussion with ProPublica, and it's going to be held at the Downtown Reno Library. I mentioned it in, uh, comments, not because, um, you all aren't also aware of it, because obviously it's been, uh, you've been invited to it, uh, through our staff. But I also want to just make sure that the public who is watching, we had a couple of comments in the, uh, beginning, opening public comment period, and they were about housing specifically. And I know that each day, all of us are being asked to, uh, comment, opine, offer solutions about housing. It is the number one issue, I think, that we all face as council members currently. And sometimes it's not easy to see all the connections of the dots of the things that we have historically done, the things that we are currently doing, and then the things that we're about to get ready to do in the future. And I think there are a number of things that this council is going to be, uh, looking at in the coming weeks, um, that will be, you know, opportunities for us to commit ourselves to, uh, making our region more affordable, uh, to finding solutions for, uh, both folks who are challenged behind housing, and also, uh, as it relates to our unsheltered population. And those are not always the same issues. And so I'm looking forward to the discussion, uh, on the 11th. Um, I know that there are some folks who are, you know, really in the community pushing on all cylinders about various aspects of rent caps, uh, Councilmember Doerr is looking at anti-gouging issues. Uh, we have a tenants' rights advisory board. And so ultimately, I think all of us are continuing to do the work. But, uh, that ProPublica, uh, meeting may be an opportunity to reach out to the community. So all are welcome, it's at the Downtown Reno Library, and I think it's 11:00 or 11:30, I can't remember.
Okay. Madam Mayor. Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much. Um, I wanted to just take this opportunity to do, um, I know it's not necessarily as, well, it is an announcement. I want to do a staff shout-out. So I was in my office yesterday and the phone rang, and I picked it up, and it was a constituent who had some concerns, um, about some abandoned, um, and damaged vehicles, which Mr. Woodley is researching and doing some things on at this moment. But she also had a question and a, a concern about a pothole that was, uh, at Keystone and Ides Street, I believe. I, no sooner had sent an email off to Mr. Flansburgh asking him to address the issue and got an email back later in the day saying, done. And I just, I just think sometimes we need to recognize that government can work nimbly and quickly. And yesterday was a beautiful example of a phone call coming in, an issue being raised, and it being addressed within the day's span. So kudos to Mr. Flansburgh, he is always so responsive, he is always so professional. And, uh, I just wanted to give a staff shout-out.
Councilmember Jarden, if I could just add to that, and I apologize, Madam Mayor, if I may have the floor.
Go right ahead.
Well, I just think that Councilwoman Jarden raises an important point, uh, both in the fact that our staff is responsive, but also her comment about nimbleness really struck me. I mean, government is not always quick to act and isn't always nimble. That's a good example of it. I think the discussions we're having about housing are about the ability to pivot and be nimble. We don't always have all the answers to every single question that arises in those contexts. But sometimes we move forward as we are, and, and I think as the mayor, you've said many times before, that it's, uh, those people who feel, fear failure are the ones who are ultimately doomed to not being successful. Sometimes we're just going to have to put it out there, and that nimbleness that Councilmember, or, uh, Vice Mayor Jarden spoke about, I think really is impactful to me, so I thank her for that comment.
All right, um, Councilwoman Jarden, or, um, Councilwoman Doerr.
Okay, this is for Mickey. Um, you know, when someone here, just in the last few moments, mentioned that, I think it was Mr. Reese, mentioned the Tenants Advisory Board, there, I, I have observed that there's some committees that we've formed that are not on this list, and I think that's one of them. And I don't know if we've appointed, or, or am I wrong? Is there, is that on here?
Um, thank you for the question. So, uh, the Tenant Issues Advisory Board was created for a two-year sunset term, so that actually sunsetted yesterday. Um, so I believe that the Housing Division is coming up with a plan of attack for how we're going to move forward in the future, and they plan on coming forward, uh, to the body in early next year to discuss kind of what that looks like and what we want to do.
And the other one that I noticed maybe isn't on here is we're, three of us are on something called the, um, New Market Tax Credits, uh, Board. Um, I think it's myself, Councilmember Weber, and Reese, and, um, that's not listed here?
I don't believe that's a board that this body appoints to, but I'd be happy to look at it.
Okay, that'd be great. And then maybe there's others, you know, like, I don't know. Those were just two that I had thought of, and I'd heard that the Tenants Issues Advisory Board was going to meet. And people had been asking me, when is it going to meet? And I had no idea that it had, like, sunsetted, so, so, okay. So Mr. Manager, I guess.
Yeah, so the, the issue with the Tenants Advisory Board, as, as I recall, is that, um, we had planned to have a meeting, and some of the membership not in this room, uh, was either unavailable or unwilling to participate in the meeting. And so we did run into the sunset issue, and the Housing Division will be here in the early part of the year to discuss how we're going to move those issues forward in a, in a appropriate forum.
Okay, because I know they didn't meet in COVID time, you know, when we had shut down and boards weren't meeting. And so I think they only had one meeting, so.
That's correct.
All right. So wait a minute, I'm confused. So are you saying that a, a council member is not willing to meet on that, what are you talking about?
No, no, there are other members of that body, and they were not.
They were not available, okay. So you couldn't get a quorum? Is that what you're getting at?
Um, yes.
Okay, maybe. Okay. Well, I'll look forward to, what's the next step?
Okay, what do you need from us, uh, Madam Clerk? Nothing? Okay.
Nope, so now we can move back to item B1A2.
All right, let's do that. Hi, Lance.
Hi there, Lance Frato.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Go ahead, give us a little update.
So I spoke to the applicant, uh, unfortunately, he's a little bit out of town, so, uh, he wasn't able to, he can come down, but it can't be till later in the afternoon, he said like 3:30 in the afternoon. So I said I would relay what he told me, and then we can move from there.
Okay.
Um, essentially, he has no intention of making this a 24-hour operation on a regular basis. He owns another bar in town, and he plans on keeping it open till about 2:00 AM, maybe 3:00 AM. But since it's not a restricted area, he wanted to, he didn't want to limit himself in case he had a New Year's party or something like that, where he wanted to keep it open until past that, that time. So, uh, per Title 18, legal was able to identify why this is owned for 24 hours. Uh, anywhere in the MUMC, a business fronting Virginia Street has the right to operate 24 hours a day without the use of a conditional, uh, without a conditional use permit. So that's where they land, that's how planning came to this determination, and that's why we're, we're at 24 hours right now.
Okay. And to, and my question, I don't remember if it was answered about, um, I thought that we noticed, um, residential within a certain amount of, like, what is it?
Distance.
I, I think you're, you're correct, with, with certain circumstances.
Yeah.
When residential is within 150 feet, noticing takes place, as, except in this situation where the, this trumps that, uh, conditional use permit or notification process, since it is a, a fronting, uh, Virginia Street.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilman Delgado, or go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus, and then Councilman Delgado, I'm going to give it to you to make a motion.
So legal, we can't condition it to less than 24 hour, oh, sorry. That's your understanding.
Bryan City, for the, for the record, City Attorney's Office, under 18041005, in the midtown, um, there is, it's written in code, that hours of operation for any business, uh, may operate 25 hours per day without approval of a conditional use permit. So it's written in code, the only way there'd be a restriction imposed in, there, under Title V, there is no limitations for business licensing to put on them. So the only way this, a limitation would occur is if they violated the code. It goes to a hearing and part of an order from a hearing officer, you could limit, but they, you have to have a bad act. And so if this business isn't in a bad act, there are other limitations in code for marijuana.
Yeah.
And that, but that's specifically written.
Okay.
Towards marijuana.
Yeah.
And then you're also, uh, next week addressing, uh, single sale alcohol use. Well, there'll be specific conditions council can impose through Title V.
Yeah.
But under Title 18, they're allowed to operate 24 hours.
Okay, so we can't override the 18 allowances with, through our privilege issuance in five, exercising our five powers. I understand, I'm not happy about it, um, and when I, and I'll just leave it at that. And that's why I've been really following up and trying to understand what are the Title 18 priorities? And so when a consultant comes up and tells us that staff is doing this and this, I'm like, where's the list? Because I have the list, you, you know, I see time and time again where I thought we were moving on things, and then our hands are tied, and, um, but the consultants seem to be able to tell us what our staff's doing, and we can't have the list or have the discussion on problems that we run our head up against time and time again. So I'm a little frustrated with this. I'm glad to know that you had that conversation with him. I think that, you know, if he has a property right under the 18, you know, he's being a smart player in, in the response he gave to you, um, and hopefully he's a good operator, but, um, and, so I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Question, maybe before the motion?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so what I want to understand is trying to, um, put all these in sort of some consistent matrix, our decision on a privileged license, our hands are tied as far as what conditions we can put on? Is that correct, Mr. Sudi?
That is correct. The, the Title V does have limitations that spell out what, what a privileged license, you know, what conditions can be imposed. And there is no, uh, specific to hours of operation for, for a bar. There's nothing in the code, so it always goes back to, to Title 18 for the zoning. We have put caveats in Title V, and that would be towards the marijuana. And it does specifically allow council to then limit hours. But we have to have a, a limiting, it has to be in code. And right now, for this particular type of business, under business licensing restrictions, it's not written in code, so.
So maybe the issue is not a Title 18 issue, but a Title V issue that might allow us with privileged licenses to put a greater, uh, specificity on the conditions. You know, maybe it's not ours, but maybe it's something else, or it could be ours. But is that your, the remedy would be that to address it in Title V?
Yes, and we, and we have done that with marijuana, and then you're, you're about to address that with, uh, single sale use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Delgado, all you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, and, and I think answer this too, Mr. Sudi, with respect to, uh, Frato, uh, is, uh, that we have a process in place for those quote-unquote "bad actors" in terms of if we run into issues or concerns, uh, with surrounding uses. Uh, but I can't speak to, after looking at the name again, uh, Josh, and I believe it's Missy, who are also just really good exceptional, uh, business owners, and I believe they own Reno Coffee Company.
That's correct.
On Wells, they have the Blind, uh, Blind Dog downtown across from Liberty. And they do an exceptional job, and I think they'd be a really, I think, they'd be good business to add to our midtown area as well, so. Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, good luck, thanks. Madam Clerk, what do you need from us?
Madam Mayor, I'll just let you know that we did receive one, uh, closing comment for item J1 from Emma White in concern of a few items which has been distributed to council.